We will now convene this meeting in order. Will you please rise and I'll do the pledge allegiance and file about the invocation by Tim Griswold.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we ask your blessing on this body. We ask that you guide all our decisions and that they be pleasing to you. Father, we bless, ask that you continue to bless this city and this country. We thank you for what you've done for us. Most of all, we thank you for your son, Jesus. In his name we pray. Amen.
Kerry is in the number four position. Citizens comments? If anybody would like to address this body? If you do, please limit to about three minutes. State your name and your address, please.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, may I ask if there's an Ask the Green here? Ask the Green.
Seeing no one, we'll move ahead. Minutes. Approval of the minutes. Anybody got a first and a second? Have a motion? Need a second? Have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Approval of agenda items for consideration. I'd like to make a little change here. I'd like to move Resolution Two up to the number one spot and then leave everything else going forward. Motion and second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Gerald.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, today is, well, not just today, but the last couple of months have been very sad here at the city. All over the city and county, I think everyone has felt the shockwaves from the death or the passing of our sweet Sherri Davis. Steve is here today, her husband. Her daughter is here also, Natalie, and Natalie brought a friend. Before we go on, one of her really good friends, Julie, is here, and I must say, I'm really close to this family and they really feel like my family too. And I've attended the church there for a while. I haven't been going like I should, Pastor. I do apologize for that. But I do love First Baptist. I love the First Baptist family. And what made that family so strong and so great and so loving was the presence of Sherri Davis. She was a face that you always saw, who greeted you with a warm smile, never ever any prejudices that I could pick up on. Just warm, loving, kind. She visited my home a couple of times. I remember her sitting on the floor in my living room, which, something which my own mother wouldn't do, but Sherri sat on the floor in my living room and we had wonderful conversations about Vacation Bible School. And we tried to make that Vacation Bible School as, I don't know if you can use the word magical when you're talking about Christians, but as Christian as possible. And Sherri did amazing things. And not only was her presence prominent and wonderful inside the church, but it also spread to the school. Visiting Sherri's classroom was like stepping inside of a National Geographic documentary. If you've been there before, you know what I'm talking about. She took us all around the world, Laura, didn't she? And we would have these fantastic parent nights. And Sherri always went a whole lot farther than a lot of us did. She took us to Libya all the time and she would complete her presentation by bringing people from Libya to our school. I remember once, when I first met Sherri, was at a presentation I did for Trent School at the time. I was trying to convince the kids at Trent School to join my after-school program, which was called Three O'Clock Groove. So we, Trent, I think you were at the elementary school at that time. And we did this big show called Three O'Clock Move or something like that. And it was on the stage at the elementary school and Sherri was a teacher we chose to pie in the face. And we patted her in the face and I thought it was so funny. And I was about 23, 24 years old. And after it was over, the principal called me to her office and said, "Look, we have to do something to make up for this." Steve, I don't know if you can remember this, but we gave y'all dinner for two to the Maple Street Mansion. Do you remember that? All because we pieced Sherri in the face. Sherri came to see me, probably about two weeks before she passed. Natalie, you waited in the car. And she knocked at the door. I didn't know who she was at first, but she came inside and she had a very special book in her hand of illustrations. And if you know me, I love illustrations and I love books. And she brought a couple of books over and I asked her to write on the inside of the books. And I was teaching at the same time and she's asking me, "Why do you want me to write in these books?" And then I found out that she passed and I immediately ran to my studio and found the books that she gave me, opened them to see what she wrote that night, which I did not read what she wrote that night, but inside was absolutely nothing. She did not write a thing. That's my last living memory of Sherri. I served as a pallbearer at her funeral and it was a wonderful service. Julie sang her favorite song. And tonight, ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in welcoming Julie Lowry to the post, what do we call this, a post, to the stand, to the, whatever we call this place up here, to sing. Julie, come on up. And can we ask the family, if you can, to join her as well? And let me thank Libby too. Steve and I were texting, I think, yesterday and we talked about Kleenex and having those handies. I think everybody in the audience should have Kleenex. So Libby, thank you for that special touch. That's what makes the city so great. Julie, yes?
I'm gonna join y'all.
Oh, yes, thank you.
You sure? Are you sure?
As you know, Sherri loved music and I've sang in her classroom many, many times. And this is a prayer, thank her presence and I think it was absolutely wonderful.
Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace. Where there is hatred, let me soothe. Where there is injury, oh, Lord. Where there is doubt, ease. Where there is despair, ooh. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, dark. Oh, divine master, grant that I may not so much fear. To be controlled as to control. To be understood as to understand. To be loved as to love. For it is in guilty that we receive. It is in pardon that we are pardoned. And it is in dying that we are born to eternal life.
Thank you so much, Gerald, and to the council members, mayor and all of you for allowing this to happen tonight. I really think Sherri would be terribly embarrassed by this. She always said, "I have a great team on that fifth grade hall." Her teaching partner, Ellen, is here and they made it happen for many years together. And she was so proud of her school, her principal, everybody who made that a great school. There's so many wonderful teachers there who had the same passion for people as she did. And she loved her kids. And she was a great teacher. Thank you.
Steve, what you said is true. Julie, thank you for that wonderful song. Probably unlike the other council people up here, I've had the privilege and honor of actually working in the school with Sherri. So I concur to everything you said and beyond. But I would, at this time, like for, the members of the Board of Education are here with us and anyone who has taught with her, I see all my teacher friends in the audience right now, Brittany and all of y'all, if you could please come up and join us right now as I read this proclamation. And mayor and members of the council, if you guys could stand and join us as well in the end. But members of First Baptist, Jennifer, if y'all, Mr. Gendrick, y'all, please, Trent, everybody. And I must say, I'm honored to be able to read this tonight and to be able to present it to your family too. Come on around, everybody. We can fill in this chamber, I think that's what it's called, right? Well... How you doing, Miss Lowry? Stacy.
Harvey.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Thank you. Wow, it's the entire place. Don't we need that right now? Come on around, everybody. Let's fill in right here too. All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here. And I'm sure Sherri would, if she were here right now, she would just smile. Uh, this is from the Office of the Mayor. And let me say to Walt Hollinsworth too. Thank you, Mayor Hollinsworth, for allowing us to do this tonight and for endorsing this, uh, proclamation. Office of the Mayor, Carrollton, Georgia, resolution. In memory of Mrs. Sherri Davis, January 9th, 2017. Whereas on October 31st, 2016, our community grieved to learn of the passing of our beloved Sherri Davis. And whereas Sherri Davis served our community in many capacities too numerous to mention herein. And whereas during the years Sherri Davis displayed exemplary dedication to the best interests of our schools and our children by working for the betterment of the lives of children and improving race relations in our community. And whereas Sherri Davis's positive influence reached far beyond her service to her family, her church, her church members, her friends, her career, and her civic activities. And whereas Sherri Davis earned the respect, admiration, and highest regards of those with whom she came in contact. And therefore, our community has sustained a great loss in her passing. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council, speaking on behalf of all of our citizens, hereby extends to the members of Sherri Davis's family the expression of sincere regret and sympathy for the loss of their loved one. And offer the hope that they will be consoled by the memories of her extraordinary life and achievements. And witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Carrollton to be affixed this ninth day of January in the year of our Lord, 2017. Signed Walt Hollinsworth, soon to be signed by me. I forgot to sign it. And Gerald Byrd, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, everybody. And thank God for Sherri. If y'all could stay. Now if y'all, hey, yes, it's, that's great. If y'all could stay and let's get the, y'all are already back there, Mayor Hollinsworth, if you want to come down and grab the other side of the proclamation. And if we could just get a picture maybe, um, of everybody and just showing their support for Sherri, I think it would be phenomenal. And once again, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And Sherri, we miss you so very much.
We appreciate anybody who wants to stay, but if you want to leave now, it'd be a good chance. Another football game comes on at eight o'clock, so. All right, we'll go back to start. Um, number one became number two. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, last year at this time, uh, this mayor and council passed, passed a resolution that we would elect a Mayor Pro Tem, uh, in January of every year. So it's time to do that again.
Anybody got anything they want to politic for?
You want to open the floor to nominations? I, um, I'll nominate, um, our current Mayor Pro Tem as the Surfer 2017, um, Mr. Gerald Byrd.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Gerald Byrd as Mayor Motown, Mayor Pro Tem.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Yes, y'all know I'm lazy and I don't do anything. So I mean, I don't know why you named me.
You're, you're not, you're not lazy, Gerald.
I don't know, Gerald. I've called on you a few times. You bailed me out.
But I, I do, I would like to say thank you to you all for your support and, uh, your prayers. And, um, I know my work schedule may be a little bit different from y'all. I may have a little bit more flexibility to run out and see things and to do things and to go watch people lay sidewalks and shoot Facebook Live and all that. But, uh, I, I just thank you guys for, uh, nominating me as Mayor Pro Tem. I've been here a very long time and, uh, thank y'all for, uh, recognizing that. Thank you. But I don't, I humbly accept.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close nominations.
There's a motion to close. Have a second? Have a second? So I'm ready to vote. All in favor for Gerald to be the Mayor Pro Tem one more time, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Community branding project, Mr. Studdard.
You guys want me to go ahead?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking at an older draft. I think I don't, I did not pick up my, updety when I'm, apologize, my bad. Uh, we're gonna go to the cemetery plots instead. That'll be Tim. I'm sorry, Erica.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as you know, last meeting, it was voted to raise the rate for a city cemetery plot from $300 to $1,000. There's been a lot of, of public outcry about that large of an increase at one time. And, uh, so we asked, uh, Chuck to prepare a resolution to at least be prepared to change that number back to whatever you gentlemen decide. Uh, I would also like for, before you vote, for him to address, uh, the issue of, I had a concern that if we kept it at a low rate, that someone might buy these up and resell them. And so we need a provision. There may already be some state law that prevents that. I don't know. But we need to, we need to at least consider that and talk about, oh, depending on what you decide to do, uh, how to prevent someone from buying these up in bulk. And, you know, the intent is for our citizens to be served by this. Um, and so if you do decide to go back to the lower rate, the intent is that our local, our citizens and families that have people out there have access to these lots. And so we would hate for an outsider to buy them up. So Chuck, if you could address that before they decide where they want to.
And I have a copy of Resolution 01, 2017. I don't know if it's, Libby, has it been distributed or? Essentially what this resolution does is that, um, it goes back to $300 per burial lot and mausoleum vault space. It also removes from the ordinance, the fee schedule. Uh, if you're familiar with our ordinances, it's a little bit unusual, uh, to set forth a fee schedule in the ordinance itself. More often than not, that's done as part of the annual budgeting process. So what this does is it reestablishes the fee of $300 per burial lot uh, and for mausoleum vault space. And it provides that moving forward, uh, the fees will be set as part of the annual budget process, like so many of our other fees. Um, in terms of, um, the prohibition on resale, Peter, my understanding is that that is currently, uh, the city's policy that we don't allow people to, to purchase lots and then resell them at a profit. So we can either just continue that policy or if you feel like, okay.
So Chuck, if you please, how do we know that a person's not doing that or if they're doing that? How do we?
Well, I, Peter, I believe there was a recent example, uh, where we, it was brought to our attention that that was occurring. And Peter can better address the actual mechanics in terms of.
Yeah, right before the last mayor and council meeting, we had, uh, someone who actually wanted to come in and do that. And we just basically said, "No, you can't do that. We're not gonna have you coming in here and trying to buy all these different plots up and then turning around and selling them." So.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but as a practical matter, um, it's a multi-step process where you actually acquire the lot. But when it comes time for burial, then you actually have to get a permit in order to, to actually enter the body. And that, that is the point at which I think we would determine whether that person owns the lot or not.
That is correct.
Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I've got a little bit. I went through the cemetery lot, um, over the weekend after, um, looking through the agenda, just wanted to see what the space, I'd never been through there. And I went, I actually went back again today at lunch, took some photographs of the cemetery. Um, right now we're spending about, if you don't mind popping those up. We spend about 61,000 a year, um, on maintaining the cemetery. Is that correct?
We spend probably 65, 70,000 dollars a year, councilman, on cutting grass, weed eating, keeping as clean as possible. Basically, people who have their plots or their area right there that they have, it is their job. It is their, they're the ones who keep up with it, the families.
And, um, in my opinion, the cemetery could do with a bit more, um, work. Um, if you look through, that's the outside line. Um, that's more city property, about four acres on the right there in that picture. And there's tires, just kind of, it's not very well maintained. Um, there could be a lot more work and I understand the budget is always a piece of that.
Correct.
My fear is rolling, I know that the money intake from fees for these plots isn't going to be a significant amount, um, regardless of bumping it up. But, um, I guess my question would be, what would you see as a, um, as a, a good increase to be able to maintain the lots, maintain the property in the way that, um, would be comparable to other city properties?
Councilman, I'm gonna have to, at some point in time, especially in this budget process, sit down with our city manager, Tim Grizzard, and work through some of that and figure out exactly. Um, there are some areas that do need upkeep. There are other areas that are, you know, presentable. But over time, yes, this is something that we're gonna have to discuss in the future. And how much do you really want to put into this? Do we want to make this something that we spend $300,000 a year on? Or do we want to put the money elsewhere? It all comes down to economics, I guess.
This is the question that I had about the entire thing. Was the cemetery, and I, I'm looking at you, but I'm talking to everybody who can answer this question. Was the cemetery a hemorrhage, hemorrhaging budget issue? I can't say that word. Like, was it bleeding so badly that we looked at our budget and decided, wait, where's the budget loss? Like, where's the fiscal loss? And then we turn and say, oh, the cemetery. Is that how we came to this place?
No, I think over the years is just something that has never been brought forth, councilman. And I think, um, yes, we probably lose 75,000 to 100,000 dollars a year depending. And I think we were trying to be fiscally responsible and, um, you know, make up some of that revenue if we could. We've, as I stated last time in the meeting, we have about a three to five-year build out, possibly seven years, when we are completely done with the cemetery and selling plots. And then it will just become part of the budget every year, this expense that we have for the upkeep.
But wouldn't we say that, um, the hundred, 75 to 100,000 dollars is not necessarily a loss? That's just maintenance of the cemetery. Like, is there a way to avoid spending 75 to 100,000 dollars on something that we have to pay anyway?
No, it's just something we're, it is something we are gonna continuously have. We were just trying, the goal was to bring our fees up to a level that you see around the county and around the area.
And that, what I want the public to understand too, because I, there's some folks talking about this issue too, that similarly to the Planning and Zoning Board, when they receive an agenda or when they receive agenda items, uh, through the city manager or whoever prepares those items for them, those things are vetted before they get to the city council. So by the time something like this gets to us, I'm under the assumption that the city staff has debated this thing. They've waited, they've weighed the pros and cons. And they've done everything that they're supposed to do before it trickles down to get to where we are. And I think the public's perception is that we just like dreamed this up, but we knew.
No, not at all.
Like two weeks before or a week before the last meeting. And we didn't know about it. And I hadn't heard any resistance in the community at all or any, seen any interest in this at all until we passed, um, the increase in the last meeting. So I say that to say, I'm not trying to wash my hands of it or say that I'm, I'm not responsible for it. But we didn't dream that up. And I think what the public needs and what the public deserves is a good, solid explanation of why we chose to go so drastic so soon. But I will take any blame that I need to, to take. But I think it's the drastic bump that got the attention of ABC News or whoever came down here and shot that the other day and all the folks on Facebook who were talking about it. It's the bump, the drastic bump or the drastic increase without really a strong, uh, explanation as to why we did that. So if we could maybe come up with a good explanation, some hard facts and figures to show why we did that so suddenly, so soon, I think the public may be able to swallow the pill a little bit better.
Gerald, I'd be, I'd like to address that if you don't mind. You know, I preach to these guys all the time to make sure that, that when we can, we charge what things cost. And I know what Peter did is he looked at the neighboring cemeteries and he looked at the towns that are similar to Carrollton. And so even though a thousand dollars is a huge increase, and I realize that now, I totally get it now, it wasn't anywhere near what a private lot costs. So it looked like a good intermediate point. I totally get it now, it wasn't anywhere near what a private lot costs. So it looked like a good intermediate point. And again, as I, I got calls myself. And as I told one lady, you know, there just wasn't a lot of outcry when the, during the meeting, and it seemed like a reasonable thing to do. We, we are constantly adjusting charges to meet, you know, to meet the city needs. And while certainly we can absorb this difference, it's the kind of thing that we would try to make up for. So philosophically, you know, whether it was a water rate or a garbage rate, or whatever kind of rate it has, a recreational rate, it's just the kind of thing we would do. We realize now this particular item is more sensitive. And didn't, didn't anticipate that. And it's like, again, I told the lady that called me, you know, we'll, we'll consider it again. So can we absorb the difference? Certainly. Philosophically, though, it's the kind of thing that we would have adjusted. So that's, that's how it happened. It wasn't meant to create a burden on anyone. And maybe it was too large an increase at one time. And like you and I discussed, if it, we're prepared for it to go back to the original number, whatever y'all decide.
And eventually, if there's a big enough loss, we're going to feel it after a while anyway, right? So.
Yes.
We'll potentially have to pay for this some, some way, somehow. I'm prepared to make a motion.
I'd like to just say a couple of things. Sorry to interrupt. You ran some numbers for us, someone, how many people inside Carroll County versus outside Carroll County are purchasing these plots? Right now, there isn't a price difference between the two. Right, we had, over the last seven years, 98 plots sold to people that reside or are from outside of Carroll County.
Correct, Councilman.
My question would be, we are trying to serve the people of our community and the people of our surrounding community, just outside the city and the county. Would it be possible to do a price difference per Chuck?
Yeah, you can.
Wait, Roy, I'm sorry. Price difference per?
For residents of Carroll County, I feel strongly like you do about rolling back the, rolling back the price. But for people that don't live within the county, they're maybe looking for a cheap plot to find.
Does the county contribute to our cemetery fund at all?
They do not, Councilman.
They do not. What if we make it the city of Carrollton then?
I mean, Gerald, I've had a lot of conversations this week also. Even talked to a church in Villareca that are running out of lots and they're $3,500 unless you're a member in good standing. If you were, pastor I talked to said, yes, if they, if you were a member of the church as a kid and moved away and you wanted to come back, it was $3,500. Unless you've been there every kind of Sunday's tithing along, and they were still getting $500 per plot for church members.
I've heard that ours is super cheap, like beyond cheap. Even at $1,000, I was told that that was still too cheap. But I guess it depends on what you consider cheap, you know? $1,000 to me might not be the same as it is to some widow out there or somebody who doesn't have any money at all. You know what I mean? It's probably the same to me and a widow, by the way.
Well, what I was thinking, if, if we looked at it as inside the city or inside Carroll County, because there are people that live right outside the city limits that are members of our city, members of our community, roll that back to 500 and keep the outside of Carroll County at 1,000. I'd like to make a motion to do that.
Yes, I'm aware. We're still in a discussion mode here. Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Come on. Come to the, state your name and address.
My name is Regina Cleveland. I live at 117 Westview Way, and it is inside the city limits of Carrollton. But the problem is, I spoke with Ricky Walker, who's the owner of Walker Funeral Home, and they also own the cemetery down here on MLK. They don't have any more space. So what you guys are going to have to come up with is a human freezer. There's nowhere to bury anybody else. So if you come up with this $1,000, I mean, it's a lot of people can't afford that. Because you're going to have to include that, even the $500. I mean, that's a lot. You're going to have to come up with, plus to open and the closing of a grave is how much, Lois? $550. So that's still $1,000. That's still $1,050 they're going to have to come up with. So my thing is, if it's not broke, why fix it? You know, there was nothing wrong with, and I still don't understand where all this $700 and $100-some thousand dollars it takes to keep up that cemetery over there. I have a brother and a mother over there. And I mean, I'm over there all the time. There's nothing fancy about that. Flowers get stolen over there, lights get stolen over there. And the maintenance over there is no whoopity-doo. I mean, we keep our mom and my brother's grave up over there. I mean, what is the big deal? You know, that's the, that's the only cemetery we have decent. And like I say, there is no Plan B. So we're going to have to stay at Plan A. And there was nothing wrong with it. And I mean, I know you say the other people do this and that, but still, if it's not broke, why try to fix it? You know, because everybody up here is elected officials, and it's just not fair. You know, because we was getting ready to have a meeting, an emergency meeting, because it was an emergency. You know, you have people that cannot afford this. My family, it wouldn't be a problem. But I'm speaking for people that cannot afford it. And that is just high. If you move up to $400, it might be okay. But even $500 is still a lot, a burden put on somebody at a time of death. That's a lot.
Regina, let me say this too. I know you just said we're elected officials, but this elected official right here doesn't have that kind of money. And I'm not.
Well, I'm glad. I mean, but like I say, I'm.
Listen to me.
Don't talk to me like that.
Listen to me, Regina. At the, at the original meeting, I said, the only way I would vote in favor of this is if we worked with the poor. It was my understanding that we were going to do that. Okay? So I'm on your side.
Well, I'm glad you are.
I understand your argument, but your, your argument doesn't have to be so strong right now because I'm on your side.
My argument is not strong. I'm speaking for the people that cannot afford it.
I appreciate that. But I'm on your side. I want you to understand that. That's what I've tried to convey to you from day one. I'm with you. Don't argue with somebody.
If you're with me.
Don't argue with somebody who is on your side.
I'm not arguing with you.
I'm with you 100%.
Okay, thank you. You was the one spoke up. Nobody said anything about you. If you're with me, then why did you speak up? Okay, that's fine. Okay, you are elected official. But that has nothing to do with you. If you am with me, then why did you speak up?
Because I'm telling you, you don't have to be so strong about it.
I'm not being strong about it. I'm just saying, I'm taking up for the ones that cannot afford it.
And I am too.
Okay, well, good, Gerald.
That's what I do. See, let me tell you something, sister. If you had been here more often.
I'm not your sister. I'm addressing you like that.
You would know that I do this at every council meeting. I stand up for the poor, Regina.
You will respect me as a lady.
You said you loved me yesterday.
Okay, I'm running against you. I'm about.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. But anyway, as I was saying, that, you know, I'm speaking for the people that cannot afford it.
And I do that every time, Regina. Everybody up here can tell you, I always stand up for the poor.
I'm not going to fuss with you. I mean, you did something very unethical.
By doing what?
Gerald, Gerald, Ms. Cleveland, we're not, we're not accomplishing anything.
Exactly. And that was so unethical.
Just know that I'm on your side, and I'm, I fight for the poor every day.
You just came in being very disrespectful. Don't ever address me as a sister. That was very unprofessional.
Well, you know, you said, you love me.
Ms. Cleveland, Gerald.
Yes, thank you.
Time.
You, you, man.
Ma'am.
But, I mean, I'm just, like I said, I'm just speaking on behalf of the ones that cannot afford it. Because, you know, we don't have a Plan B. And, and I spoke with Ricky, who runs Walker Funeral Home, and he said, they're, they're already at their capacity.
We understand. We, we hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm prepared to make a motion. In favor of what she just said.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, I assume that you're ready to make some sort of motion. Go ahead, Gerald.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I would like to move that we go back to the original rate of $300 for a cemetery plot as presented before us in the proclamation that we, or the documents that we just reviewed. Well, I was gonna, what I was gonna fight for tonight was business as usual, not going back to anything, except the original cost.
Gerald, are you asking for a motion being made to adopt Resolution 01-207?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that will be to revert back to the original cost, the original fee.
And according to the resolution, then we'll set forth going forward at each budget in July.
Say that again, please?
Now, if you're, you're making a motion to adopt Resolution 01-217.
Effective today.
Effective today. But, but at the budget in July of every year, we'll go back and revisit. You understand that?
That's fine. But effective today until July 1st, or whatever the fiscal year ends, I'll be, let's keep it the same.
Just keep the same. Okay. I'm just trying to clarify. I'm not, what we're trying to do here. So, so what you, Matt, you got anything else, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I'm confused by his motion, what he's doing. Is he, I know you're moving up the motion, Gerald. Are you just want to adopt what's on here? Are you trying to amend this as well?
No, adopt. Let's review what's on, what's on there takes us back to the original.
Just take your time. Take your time.
And you can read the last two.
Whereas in addition, the mayor and city council wish to repeal Section 3040 fees of the city, of the codes of ordinances. When we say fees in that sense, are we talking about the fees that were voted upon the last time or the fees that are current now? Right.
Previous.
My motion is to bring us back to $300 lots versus the $1,000 lots. You understand that? To revert back to.
That's what this resolution does.
Well, my motion is to adopt the resolution as presented.
It, it does it for mausoleum lots, not for burial lots. Is that correct?
No, this returns the 300, the, the resolution as presented will return both burial lots and mausoleum vault spaces to $300.
Back to where we were.
It will take the fee schedule out of the code of ordinances, and it will be something that you guys will adopt each year as part of the annual budget process, as this is written. So it will go back to $300. And then as y'all adopt the budget, you, you will consider that, the fees for the burial lots and the mausoleum vaults and all each year as part of the budget process.
All right. Well, that's my motion.
You have a, you have a second, Roy. I have a motion and a second. Is any more discussion? Hearing none, I assume we're ready to vote. All in favor of adopting Resolution 01-217 as it's reading, written, please raise your hand. All opposed. Motion carries four to one. Moving on. Now, Ms. Erica.
The next item on your agenda is the approval of the proposal for the community branding campaign. We have discussed this briefly at some of your work sessions. In October of 2016, we released a request for proposals for this particular community branding campaign. And in a nutshell, what we are attempting to do is we are looking at the city as a whole, and we are basically trying to better tell our story. That's, that's kind of the, the quick and dirty of it. There are some very specific provisions. We did ask our consultants to provide how they may, how they may do and go about this particular, this particular campaign. We did receive 13 or 14 proposals for the campaign. So we're actually a little bit, a month behind our original schedule. We are recommending that the city council approve the firm Create Mines and Wheat Germ from Carrollton, Georgia and Noonan, Georgia, to move forward with this project. Their fee proposal was $47,500. And we are recommending that the city council approve this. These funds would be taken from the hotel and motel tax.
Erica, I think this is pretty important. Pretty big deal. And I might make a motion to table it. I'm just curious, have you presented, I'm, I'm curious what these firms have produced to have y'all go ahead and assign these points. I'm just curious what, what examples they've given you, or examples of their work product, or something.
It's, it's actually all of that. They've given us examples of work product. They've given us examples of work experience. They've given us examples of municipal experience. They've also given us their, kind of their playbook of how they may go about doing this and taking the community through this. One thing that's very important to us is stakeholder input. What we would like to be able to do is have a product, at the end of the day, that even the stakeholders, and what I mean by that is the folks that aren't in this room, but the community, the businesses, would take this and embrace this. I think all of us can probably agree, we've not done a good job of telling Carrollton's story. I just got back from a conference today, actually. And, you know, folks that haven't been here in the last 10 years, I don't think really know what Carrollton is. And so I think we're at a really good opportunity to be able to do just that and tell our story as a group. And that means both from the municipal side and also the, you know, like I said, the business community, the institutional community as well. I mean, you know, you've got two or three schools, you know, systems in the city of Carrollton. So that's one of them. And like I said, all of the proposals are available for viewing. As far as the scoring goes, I did put in your memo, we did base the scoring off of fee proposals and the quality of those work, work examples, their approach, how they may go about doing it. And then also qualifications, experience, and then their specialized work experience with municipal governments.
And Erica, I want to just note, you were, as you always do, you said, please contact if you have any questions. You're always open. City Hall is always open and willing to share information. I guess just of last week being a short business week, I didn't have sufficient time, embarrassingly. If we, if I made a motion to just postpone this until the next meeting, so we can maybe review these proposals, the, the proposals, have they given any inclination of what they think the branding of Carrollton should be? Did they, did you, have they already tried that? Or they just told you what they've done?
The first task that they would do would be kind of that research and foundation task. So we certainly don't want somebody coming in and telling us what we are. We want to actually kind of figure out what our story is based on the community input. So the short answer is no. But that is part of, that's basically kind of task two, if that makes sense. And that's kind of the, the visual elements that you might see. So, you know, a logo, but this is more than just a logo. I mean, this is just more than somebody saying, okay, this is what the city of Carrollton logo looks like now. This is really kind of both, you know, how we verbally tell our story and then how we visually present our story. So that would be part of task two. And then that task three would be the implementation. So we would be looking at how do we go about implementing this brand? I'm sure that from a business perspective, and, and, you know, the university does a good job of this as well. So does Tanner. So does Southwire. They are, the implementation, without implementation, really task one and two are pointless. So we really want to have some direction on how we go about kind of redirecting the community into, you know, the story that, that we're going to tell and create. But we don't know what the story is. That's basically task one.
If I made a motion to table, and I don't even know if I'd get a second, or even if it'd be successful, does that hurt us to put it off a month at all?
We're down, we're off of a month right now anyway. We had more proposals than I was actually anticipating. I did contact the one that we were recommending and ask if that would, if they would want to pull their name out of the hat because we are off a month. And they said no. I did not ask for two, about two months. I doubt that would be the case. But, so I would assume that would be okay. I know that, you know, we're ready to move forward, you know, whenever you guys are.
Any more questions?
I do like this idea, and I think it's wonderful. And I think Carrollton is a great community. And people are always surprised when I invite them here from Atlanta or from other places at the local flavor of downtown. So I think it's, it's a great thing.
I have a motion to adopt.
I'd rather, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to table this until the first Monday in the month of February, that we could look at it again. And that the city council, the mayor, if they want to have the opportunity to contact Erica and learn this, I think it's just very important instead of just going ahead and adopting it today. So my motion is to table the selection of a firm to create a community branding proposal until the first Monday, February 2017.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
So, are you saying that maybe this is something that we could look at at retreat? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know if we have enough time. I, I don't know if we have enough time of that. I just would like to look at the work product from these different three organizations and just kind of maybe get an idea of, I mean, she's never gone down to three. I'd just like to see what they have. And she says she has the proposals. And I think it would be good for all of us to look at it. And also the beautiful. and I think it would be good for all of us to look at it, and also the beautiful county committee, I would like them to maybe, if possible, just look at it, and I mean, I, I know it's our decision, but, um, and maybe, I don't know if the mayor's had an opportunity to look at it, I just, I don't want to suggest, my constituency wants me to keep an eye on the budget and understand that, I'm charged to keep an eye, so, um, I'm, and also to hire local, so obviously I'm biased towards going with Create Minds, but I am curious about North Star and Chandler things. So, I don't know if that answers your question, so I, I don't know if we can look at retreat, because I think our retreat's in March. So I don't think, no, if that answers your question, no, we'd have to look at it.
So your, your reasoning behind tabling this is so you can have more time to look at the history of these two?
Nah, I want to look at their proposal, their submissions and see their work product. But if y'all don't want a second and y'all want to make a decision tonight, that's fine.
Got a motion to table till February. Is there a second? Hearing none, motion fails. So we're back to adopting as we have, so, anybody gonna make a motion?
I make a motion that we, uh, move forward based on, uh, staff recommendations for, um, item number four, community branding.
So we have a motion from Gerald to move forward as staff recommendation, do I have a second?
Again.
Have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
I recuse myself from this vote.
You can't recuse. Rory's recusing, back to everybody in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries four to one for the recusal.
Uh, I'm just curious, Rory, is that a financial recusal or a?
Uh, no, it's conflict, conflict of interest, I know the people that work with Create Minds, um, the owner of Create Minds actually worked for her.
Okay.
And I know, uh, Wheat Germ as well, um, pretty well, just felt like it was a conflict.
But you don't have a financial in, financial interest in Create Minds?
No.
No ownership interest or anything like that, okay.
Thank you.
That gets us down to apartments, planning commission? Oh, I'm still looking at the wrong one, I'm sorry, police vehicle, Joel? Or Tim, which one?
Oh, I'll introduce it and Joel can give you the details, uh, we are coming up on, uh, having to purchase vehicles in the next budget cycle, and, uh, as you know, for decades, uh, police departments have used the Ford Crown Vic, they don't make them anymore. Uh, in the previous administration, used a lot of those Chevy Tahos and they're a great vehi- vehicle, but they've gotten extremely expensive, and so Joel approached me the other day, he's got several vehicles down, he's got about seven that are in the hundred and, I think there's several here, it says four that exceed a hundred and twenty thousand miles and, uh, there's four between a hundred and eight and a hundred and ten, we've got several in the shop, and so the, the latest vehicle that people, uh, in the police business tend to be, uh, considering is the Dodge Charger. Uh, he would buy this out of the drug, seize drug fund, uh, so it won't hit our, uh, our other sources of income, and I'm sorry, I forgot in my glasses, I can't read the total, I think this says twenty six thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, Joel, would you like to address any further detail on this, please?
We've been doing the Tahos, as you said, they outprice themselves, some agencies are still going with that, I talked to Chief Meadows from Noonan on Friday, they just purchased nine of them at thirty-two thousand, federal contract. Still, we can get the, uh, the Ford Interceptor Police sedan that we bought a few months ago out of the drug fund that we're using. Uh, we also bought the Ford Interceptor SUV that we're trying out, talked to Sheriff Langley, they just ordered seven of these Chargers, and so we wanted to get one of these to try it, and we haven't bought cars in going on two years, and we typically used to buy four to five a year, so we didn't run into this, um, so if we can get this, by the time we're able to buy another fleet of cars, we'll kind of know what we want to buy, because they're all about the same price range. It is just over my head, but it comes with the, uh, we're not going to have to buy a laptop, you may know more about this, you've been on the road a lot longer than I have, I've been off the street for as long, but laptop computer, the stand, um, it's going to come, all built in, Dodge builds it in your, uh, screen into your dash. So, we got with Jeffrey, our IT person, he said it was going to save, I don't remember the amount of money, but it, it's an ex, it's an additional, as you can see on that price sheet, it's an additional twenty-one hundred dollars for that, which will save having to buy the laptop, the mounts and all of that.
They're going to free up a little space inside the cab, too?
And it will free up space for them to put the rifle and shotgun back up front where it's needed.
Exact same ones as Walt, so thanks.
Uh, this is not a question for you, Joel, this is really a question for Tim, and Tim, I'm not even trying to put you on the hot sheet, it's, it's when I read this, it caught my attention, we would like to try Dodge Charger Pursuit, and I'm just curious, are other, what are other municipalities in the last twenty-four months that you know that are, what kind of type, type of cars are they purchasing? Yeah, I know some, I'm talking about other, in, in addition to Carroll County, what are other cities, Sandy Springs?
What Terry's been doing is buying the Tahos and the Chevy and Palace.
Right.
They're just outpricing themselves.
Yeah.
And so he's going back with the Charger, they, this would be the first time we've ever had a Charger. Um, I talked to, again, Chief Meadows in Noonan, they bought Chargers years ago, they had front end issues with them. It's twenty, it's a twenty-seventeen, I don't know, if the sheriff's researching, he's buying seven of them, I thought we'd buy one, not sink all of it into, into one particular vehicle right now, this will give us a few months to try this, the interceptor vehicle we've got, the SUV and the Charger.
So you talked to the sheriff in Noonan?
The police chief in Noonan, they're sticking with the Tahos.
They're going to stick with the Tahos? I was just, I was just curious.
Um, Forest Park outfitted their entire police department with Tahos.
Oh, they did, wow.
But, you know, when we, when we originally bought these, they were twenty-six nine on state contract, now it's, uh, Chief Meadows is getting them for thirty, I think thirty-two nine, and that's not four-wheel drive.
That's the Tahoe you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
But we re- we really don't know what the best vehicle is, since the Crown Vic's gone, this was the best way to see.
Those Tahos that they're buying, do you still have to do laptops and all that sort of stuff in those as well?
And you do in the, in the Forge too, that's why we wanted to try this.
Okay.
Uh, Chris and I saw it at a demo in July at the Chiefs Conference in Savannah, um, I thought that when the price come out, that would outprice themselves, but again, they're coming out, you can see that sheet, you know, the basic model is twenty-three, when you add the computer and the, the spot lamp, uh, and the deactivate the rear windows, it comes up to twenty-six eight, which is less than what we paid for the SUV interceptor.
I'd like to say too, that, you know, with the first of last year, I was pushing Joel, and I know Walt was also to get more life out of these cars, I think they're, uh, they normally, uh, uh, replace them at a hundred thousand miles. We were hoping to push to a hundred and fifty, and I even checked with other police departments and relatives I have, uh, in the Atlanta area, and they said, you're not going to get that, they, uh, the abuse of the car is just not going to hold up. I want to commend Joel, because he's, he's, he's met us halfway with that, he's at about a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. By the time he does buy in July, after you budgeted for it, uh, you know, these vehicles are going to be a lot farther along, but, uh, he is pushing the mileage on them to, to try to get more use and, and save the city more money.
Just comes to a point where, like Tim and I talked about, it's a safety, Greg's driving down the road and his transmission falls out. You know, what if he's on the way to an armed robbery or, you know, we just, to protect the citizens, it's not, we don't want luxury, we don't want the, the Tahos are nice, but again, when we were buying for twenty-six nine, it was great, but at thirty-two and thirty-three, they've outpriced themselves.
I, I just want to say, I've learned a lot about public safety in the last year, you know, I, things I just didn't think about, like, it's okay if I break down, I can get out and walk or I can call somebody to get me, it is not okay if, if Joel breaks down on the way to a robbery, so.
Since you're, they're running about a hundred and twenty thousand miles, how many years do they last? How often are we going to be buying these?
Well, typically, like I said, to, to maintain our fleet, we'll buy four to five a year, it's been going on two years since we've ordered any. So that's why you're seeing this, you're seeing eight vehicles right now, you've got, and this was written, this was the end of a December report, so we're at January ninth, uh, a hundred and twenty thousand, more than a hundred and twenty thousand, four vehicles, four at that time had between a hundred and eight and a hundred and ten, so that's eight vehicles right there that we would have already had somebody, another car in place for it.
I think what Rory was trying to say, how many miles per year are you getting on a car?
Depends on the vehicle, uh, Greg, I'm going to say patrol, I can get you mileage report, we, we do the report every, but patrol will spend two thousand miles a month on a car.
What year are these that, I know you looked at, uh, we looked at mileage, I don't remember the year of the vehicles, but, but you're going to replace your car?
I'm, I'm just going to be, I'm going to guess and say twenty-ten, twenty-eleven.
Sounds like, sounds like four years' use, five years at the most, four to five, five?
Yeah, on a patrol vehicle, you've got to remember, they're patrolling non-stop, the traffic units, they're more, uh, sitting running radar, laser, so they're not putting as many miles on, they don't respond to calls, they respond to accidents, which is about two thousand accidents a year in the city. Of course, the CID, the detectives' cars, they'll last, you know, ten years.
The car you drive is very old, isn't it, hell?
But it's, listen, I, I don't want it, I've, I've had.
I just want to make the point, did you?
I got it in December of oh-four.
If you save money, you save us money, that's a full and proud advantage.
December of oh-four, and my, my goal is to, and I don't, I don't want to retire anytime soon, but my goal is to keep it till I retire. That's just something personal.
You're too young for that.
Any more questions? Soon maybe y'all ready to give Joel the answer on this?
I make a motion to purchase the, um, Dodge Charger.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote, all in favor of approving the police vehicle purchase, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Joel. Appointments, planning commission.
Uh, we have three planning commission members whose, uh, terms expired at the end of Dec- December, uh, they are listed in your packets, uh, they're Joe Neal, Kenny Bryan, and Casey Vance. Uh, at this time, we are asking for either appointments or reappointments of three additional planning commission, planning commission members, uh, so that we can have a full commission.
I probably should already know this, but has Joe Neal expressed, or any other people you just named, expressed that they want to stay?
Um, we haven't contacted them that, about that directly, uh, quite frankly, a lot of them don't realize that, that, that they are expiring until we call them and tell them, so, uh, they do, uh, Joe does come to the meetings and is an active participant in the commission, I will say that.
And I'll add, uh, I've talked to Casey Vance this week and he wants to stay on, on board.
Gerald, I specifically asked Joe, but I see him all the time, I'm a lot of the meetings with him, he, he talks about how much he enjoys this, well, I'm, I'm sure that he wants to stay.
That's awesome.
Anybody know anything about Kenny?
Um. No.
Do you have anybody you want to rep, have you vetted this through the planning and zoning committee?
Uh, we do not typically vet this through the planning commission, uh, this is typically a, uh, council and mayor decision.
As you said, we have not talked to the ones that are coming up for renewal, other than Jim.
We let, we did, we did reach out to let, um, I believe we reached out to let them know that, that the appointments were coming up, but, you know, we, in the past, it's best to not assume one way or the other until you guys make your decision.
Do you have any names to put forth?
I do, um, Steve Moore, he's a, uh, graduate from the master's program at University of West Georgia of the, uh, urban and regional planning, um, he's actually a physics professor at the West Central Tech and is a resident of the city.
So what was that planning and zoning degree or whatever you said he had, city department?
Urban and regional planning, it, um, it was part of the political science department at West Georgia, um, I don't think they have the planning person there anymore that used to teach a lot of those courses, that's actually who I reached out to first was Sal Peralta, the chair of political science, to see if they had any, um, planning professionals over there that had formal education in it, and he was one of the people that, he recommended, uh, Steve Moore, and I'd known Steve for a good few years, so, a, a smart, capable guy, and he's got the formal education to back it too.
So Steve Moore to replace? And Kenny has shown, has not shown an interest in remaining on planning and zoning?
We didn't ask, we just, like I said, we just reached out to him and let him know the state of.
Well, it looks like Joe Neal has been up for at least two terms.
Uh, yes, uh, you can look at when they were originally appointed, uh, some of them, uh, fulfilled appointments that were vacated, so, uh, they're a little, they're not necessarily full-term appointments, um, back to back, but you can look and see when they were originally appointed on your memos. Joe has been on there, yes, since, since oh-eight.
And I would just like to say, I would hope y'all would consider putting Joe back, because he is always there, it is, it is sometimes difficult to get a quorum, so, uh, certainly much, certainly appreciate his attendance.
He's been, he's certainly been, uh, had a good attendance record and is very active.
What about Kenny this evening?
Um, and, and like I said, I can, uh, Kenny has a decent attendance record, uh, I'm, from what I've seen, um, that he's, he's active as well.
Second to motion.
Which motion?
Is the motion to keep Joe and Casey and then replace Kenny with Steve?
That's correct. I'll make a motion to keep Joe.
So I have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
I thought Mr. Waters might have somebody. You have, okay, all right, I was waiting. Okay, sorry, I wasn't trying to. I don't, not, not any discussion?
No more discussion, I assume y'all ready to vote on this, um, proposal of, uh, keeping Joe Neal, Casey Vance, and replacing Kenny Bryan with Steve Moore? Gerald, ready? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mayor and council announcements. Anybody got anything you want to say? We, we might get home in time for the football, huh?
Game are y'all talking about, first of all, what's that? Okay, and I'm serious, uh, I would like to start off by thanking, uh, the police department for their shop with a cop program, I continue to hear great things about that at Walmart and it's just absolutely wonderful and all the citizens are talking about that. Also, y'all did a coat donation program that I saw in the hallway when I brought the kids down here for a tour or to meet with you or whatever we did the other day, it was just great, so thank y'all for that as well. I would like to, to thank Tim and, uh, city staff too for the sidewalks on Alabama Street. On the way here today, I noticed that they were about halfway done, so that looks absolutely great, and I've got nothing but positive feedback from our constituents on that as well. Uh, Mike Green and to all city departments, I, I can't name them all, but thank you very, very much for, uh, everything y'all do and the way of the storm cleanup and taking care of people, and Jimmy, I know y'all been there every step of the way, uh, through the ice and, and all the threats that we recently had, and, um, so we thank y'all for that. I'm sorry I missed all the city parties that y'all had, but my business has gotten me at night having parties on my own. And, uh, also the West Carrollton Garden, we're working on that, and there's some folks who are designing that, we look forward to meeting with Kent, uh, later this week, I think, or next week, to talk about the West Carrollton Garden, which is going to take place at the, uh, Legends West, um, and I wanted to ask Tim to, the sweet little lady on Willie North keeps calling me every day about that light.
Oh, I know it's ordered.
Oh, she called two times today.
Tommy, can you check with Kenny, he knows it's a, it's a street light, not signal, but a, you know, an actual, uh, light, and there was one pole on that street that doesn't have one, so I know it's ordered.
I just hate to call her back and tell her that we're working on it, but I'll, I'll call her back and tell her that. And also, if, Tim, if we could do maybe a paving update on streets, especially, uh, Acox Street is one that I've recently noticed, uh, and I know we were waiting for the weather to warm up, but I know spring is, is quickly approaching, so could you maybe update us on paving, and then also on the Presbyterian Bermuda Triangle that's just over our shoulder back here, if you don't mind?
Be glad to, uh.
Thank you.
We're a few months from the paving season starting back, they want forty de, Tommy, stop me if I say something wrong, forty degrees and rising, is that correct, or is it fifty, now forty-five degrees and rising, and, uh, so we're probably going to be April. Uh, uh, the easements are worked out with the property owners on Presbyterian and Maple and Alabama, but again, it's going to be a paving issue, uh, hope to have the actual documents in my hand in the next week or so, so we'll go ahead and go to bid, get that to you and get it awarded so they can jump, uh, in April, right away.
And lastly, let me do this too, let me ap- And lastly, let me do this too, let me apologize to everybody in the audience, uh, for uh, being a little bit passionate tonight, I've been up here for a long, long, long time. And it's very rare that my constituents come to, uh, as y'all know, that is, is the fact, they rarely come to uh, meetings and they rarely support me on the city council, so tonight. When I, you know, saw the anger of one of my constituents, um, it, it angered me a little bit, and I think that's just a natural human. Uh, behavior, because I've been here for a long time, and I walk the streets by myself every day, and I march alone. And uh, they don't always support me, but I know they love me, and I know that they're there whenever I need them, and I thank them for that, but I want everybody, and I don't know if the camera's rolling or not. But I want everyone to know, I mean, if you know me, you know that I love everybody, and I love all people, and I do my best every single day to elevate mankind. And uh, and I'm just going to continue doing that with this post or without this post, I was Gerald Byrd before, I was a city councilman, I was in the housing projects and. Sandra Morrison, all those people can tell you, I've, I've always done what I do, and I'm going to keep on doing, doing it, whether I'm here or whether I'm there, so thank you, and again, I apologize to everybody.
Anybody else?
I'd like to, uh, or, go ahead, Matt, sorry.
Thank you, uh, first thing I'd like to do is uh, is brag on our newsletter that came out, I don't know if y'all have seen this yet, um. I got it yesterday in the mail, mail ran on Sunday, and I thought it, talked about everything that was promised and delivered. And everything from our projects, um, thank you, Tim, you've done a great job, and any city staff that assisted you on that, thank you, and. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and everybody on city council, and this was the brainchild of Gerald, here's your copy, Gerald. So, thank y'all so mu, so much for doing that, also, was going to tell Peter, for anybody that doesn't think people in city council don't read these packets, Peter hid on page ninety-seven out of a hundred pages. He put a joke in here to say, we now interrupt your regular scheduled report to bring you the most blessed image rain. And I was already picking on Peter about that before, but we actually do read these reports, then we saw this in here, I think he intentionally put this in here to see if we. Read his reports, but outstanding job. And Joel, again, I know I brag on y'all, but I see the DUIs are less than they were this time last year, thank you again for being aggressive doing that, keeping our cities safe and. To the fire department answering, I think, over two-hundred-and-fifty calls, what I, what I saw, um, if I'm looking at that correctly. And um, the, the next thing, I'll be having a city council, no, I'm sorry, a town hall meeting next Tuesday on the seventeenth. At six o'clock at the train depot, uh, the mayor and the city council, y'all are welcome to attend if you want to, it's been published, so y'all can come if you want to. Um, so, I think we're going to have food and drink there to meet with my constituents. And then, Tim, if you can just address, I did have one constituent talk about the Maple Street crosswalk, and I think maybe you can address that in your closing, you don't have to do it now.
I'd like to echo the uh, thanks to Mike Green and his crews for really uh, making sure that our streets are safe and gritted and sanded right after all those storms and. Uh, was it River? There was a water main break.
River bin.
River bin, worked from four PM to. Um. Cold, wet work, not anything that I'd want to be doing myself, so thank you to the crews that were out there doing that, uh, it's hugely important and. Probably not thanked enough, so thank you, um, I want to thank Joel and his crew, um, the uh, Neighborhood Slow Streets campaign. Working to, last meeting, we had Brett Hex up here from uh, Spring Street, I get a lot of calls about really trying to calm traffic in. All areas of the community, especially, I get the calls from my ward, of course, but in all areas of the community, making sure that um. Our streets are safe or walkable, um, and. Uh, Joel, you've been instrumental in making sure that we have uh, those streets. Uh, enforced at all times to make sure that um, people are obeying the, obeying the laws and making sure they're not running through stop signs, speeding down our streets. Um, so thank you a lot for that.
Mr. Mayor, may I, one more thing, just, I just want to thank Peter for this annual report, I think it is wonderful, and y'all, I'm just going to say it, I love diversity. And I love that you featured uh, two of my kids playing violins on the front. Uh, at the grand opening of Legends West, I don't know if you guys have seen this, but these girls play classical violin, and they are absolutely phenomenally intelligent young women. And I think this is wonderful, I think it's wonderful, all the programs that you've, uh, where are you, Peter? He's gone, all the programs on the inside, I, I think it's absolutely wonderful, so thank you.
Sorry, guys, I got a long list, one is the uh, wooden bridge, I tell you, um. I don't know any greater punishment than giving a city a railroad bridge, but uh, we are, hopefully by mid, ju, mid-January, we'll have the go-ahead. To do the repair, the materials bought, the insurance is in place, uh, we are waiting for a signed copy of the policy. Uh, that the railroad needs before they'll approve it, so again, hopefully, and the work will only take three days, so. Um, again, it's uh. That's, that's not something we need to own, but we do own, and it's just a nightmare dealing with the bureaucracy. Um, again, Mike, it was mentioned, those guys, that was a line that was ten feet deep and they worked all night, a couple of years ago. Uh, we blew a main on South Street and it was seven degrees, and that's when I realized how old I had gotten, I literally could not stand to be out there while they worked and they were standing in water. Uh, all night, so I appreciate what they do, um. As uh, Mitch indicated, we had a lady call about a, a crosswalk she would like to see on Maple Street at Tuggle. Tommy is looking at that, but that is an extremely dangerous uh, idea to actually put a mid-block crossing on Maple. Uh, so he is looking at other things, sidewalk enhancements where the people would have a route that's safe, I won't try to explain that now when we get it together and can move forward with it, we'll do that. Uh, we are, we have a very close relationship with the University of West Georgia's, and their police department, there's a meeting Friday. That uh, Dr. Marrero and I and uh, Joel and his new police chief are going to participate in. And again, talk about sharing resources and attacking crime around the university, so we appreciate uh. Them and uh, again, it's a very close uh, uh, relationship between the two groups, uh, you mentioned that flyer, Jonathan Reed. Did the graphic work on that, so I appreciate him doing that. The budget work session is coming up the first weekend of March, that is a Saturday and Sunday, it's at Callaway. Uh, the audit is in, it will be presented to you February, and we went from twelve comments down to three. Uh, obviously, we want to see that go to zero, that takes some time, but uh, we've made some. Major changes in how we handle money and very proud of that. Um, and again, thanks, all the Mike's crews and uh, Jimmy's and, and Joel's and uh. Again, I really see uh. Every day what's involved in public safety and what a good job these guys do when we have events like this, so thank you.
Anybody else? Therefore, our. Meeting adjourned.
Thank y'all.